The hour has officially struck according to satellite time, so I will officially call the October 14th, 2015 Town Board Work Session to order. We'll let the minutes reflect that the entire board is here, as well as some distinguished staff and even more distinguished audience. The first item of business is the September 9th minutes. Everyone has a copy of the minutes that Lisa put together. I'm going to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the minutes will stand. Approved as written. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Monthly reports, with the exception of building zoning fire marshal, justice courts mulli, and local history room personnel, all the others have been submitted. Just note that the Personnel Director is out of town, will be back early next week. The others, I would expect, would be in by the end of this week for our requests and requirements. With that, we have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Costello for intros.
Thank you, Tony. Dr. Flon's here this evening, and the reason he's here is because you have given approval for various projects on his property over 250, most recently 2146, whereby you granted preliminary and final site plan approval for a 6,000 square foot building. In addition to that, you granted preliminary approval for two 4,000 square foot buildings on what used to be the Reese property, which is directly to the north. Everything was moving along nicely until Dr. Flon came to me a couple of weeks ago and said that he had a proposal to build a 4,000 square foot building on the front by the old Reese house, which was going to be a dentist office. And I said, "That's all well and good, because now you comply with zoning for that site." And now incentive zoning falls out of play, but understand that once it falls out of play, it can't come back at a later date.
Right.
So you have to make a decision. If you want that to be a business non-retail use for all eternity, you're going to lock into it now. It's going to stay that. And then, of course, the back business will be a business non-retail, because that is the deal. We are maintaining that, zoning along the adjacent property owners. So I think he thought to himself, "That's not really what I want to do." And I wanted the board, really, just to verify the fact that the mindset is, once you get incentive zoning, you have it. But if you don't get it initially, you don't get it later, because we can't be flip-flopping, zoning all over the place every five minutes when somebody comes in. So I think that's really why he's here this evening. I don't know if you have any comment to the board at this point in time.
I just asked Dr. if you'd please come to the front table, if you would please. We do record these, as you're well aware, so any comments, that will be certainly part of record.
Yeah, well, it's the layout of the properties that you recently approved. Yeah, if the audience can see it, then it would be helpful.
Thank you, Mark.
So then my next question to Dr. Flon was recognizing that you want to put a dentist office to the rear of the property now, because he has committed to building a dentist office. What are your ideas for the front of the property? And if you have any, and if you do, maybe the board would be interested in hearing some of your ideas, so we can give you some directions to where you want to go.
Well, we've been getting a lot of interest retail-wise in the front building, in the 4,000 square foot building.
So I was just going to say, thank you, Cas. Don't shine that in anybody's light, in anybody's eyes.
Don't shine it in the airplane.
All right. So, circle that again, if you would, please, Cas.
Yeah, give us a snapshot again, anyone who's watching, like, what are we looking at?
That's a 4,000 square foot building that's been granted preliminary approval for design and layout, but not for the use itself.
Okay, you still were Panera's first.
Panera is down here.
And then the new buildings right there.
This building's being constructed right now.
And just so that you know, just for the public's well-being and notice that he is in the process now of making applications to you for conditional use permits for the three uses that were proposed, one being Moe's, the second one being the Harrah's Zoo, and then the third one being the AT&amp;T business.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
And then, just, I swing back here, and that would be where the dentist office is going to go, the 4,000 square foot dentist office?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're 2,400.
2,400?
Okay.
Oh, all right.
But the Reese property, the one that was the Reese house?
That's exactly right. That's where the Reese house was, right there.
That's the house existed, it was right there.
Yes, but you're talking about the dentist being back?
Well, yes, and they'll still have to come for site plan approval to you, because you are overseeing this incentive zoning program for the entire property. So they will be back to you for that, but my concern is now, at this point in time, what may or may not go in here, recognizing it won't be a dentist office.
Right, okay.
So if you want to talk a little bit about some of the things you're thinking about for that site, that might be helpful.
Well, it's not what, I mean, it's just that we've been getting calls more retail than office, tanning salon, a salad and sandwich place, burger. But if I do do the burger place, I mean, I have to have a drive-thru. That's what they're looking for. And we do have room on the north side of the building to put a drive-thru.
And in addition to that, for the board's information, you do have a contract with Mr. Trout now to possibly purchase his property at some point in the future, so you'll have access to that property as well for parking issues and all sorts of other issues.
Is that the Carwash?
No.
Which property are you referring to?
Well, Carwash property is owned by Trout, if I remember correctly, and he leases...
It was? Is that now?
No, he sold.
He did sell that, okay. I knew there was some discussion that he was possibly, but at one point, he owned the land and was leasing.
The land?
Yes, the property to the rear, yes, that's what he has.
To the north, to the rear.
Yep.
So what is the action item or discussion topic then this evening?
It was just a discussion topic. There's no real action item. It was just, I wanted to verify the fact, you know, I'm telling him something, I want to make sure that the board agrees with what I'm telling him, and I'm hearing that you do.
So the area with the dentist office, that's not part of the incentive zoning area? This is Trout property that's just been for sale?
That's right. And as I say, there was a, we had a little glitch here for a few minutes, where we actually thought that if it, remember, remember now, the Reese property was not part of the...
Originally, yeah.
Original, that is correct.
So this is a new proposal.
Right.
And then I got nervous, because if that was going to go to dentist office, you wouldn't even be reviewing this, it would just go to the planning board, because it's just a straight application.
This other dentist office, the one that you're speaking of in the back, that will go straight to the planning board, no?
No, because it's going to be part of the incentive zoning project, just the way Farish's site was now too. And I want you to, I want you to have oversight on the entire thing, because sending that to the planning board now at this late date, they don't have the background or history as to what was going on. And now that he's indicated that he wants to go ahead with incentive zoning for the front porch, it makes sense that you would do the back portion as well, because parking's involved.
It's on the same parcel.
It's the same parcel, there's cross-parking requirements and all sorts of other things. So it just makes good sense.
It's fluid, that one.
But there was a point in time when this was going to go to the planning board for a few days, until we had that discussion about possibly doing something else. And I don't want to get a feeling from the board, if you're comfortable enough to have that continue to be a new incentive zoning program, which he's obviously willing to, you know...
So 4,000 square feet would allow for how many buildings? What are you saying?
Well, he's looking at a 4,000 square foot building to the front, and now he's saying he wants a 2,400 square foot building to the rear.
I would just, I would still be 4,000.
And you're splitting it off.
Kind of like what Masachi's doing.
All right, so you've got two 4,000 square foot buildings.
Okay, so it's one business?
It would be one building with probably two separate businesses in it.
This is what I was trying to get at, how many businesses?
Yeah, he'd have two approved appropriate businesses for it being in our zone in the back building.
You've got to think about parking and the whole thing, I guess.
Right, and that's really why it's important for you to review it, because you've tied everything in the access road. The access road is actually being built in this, is part of this process now, for the 6,000 square foot building that will be built.
But the whole thing about Trout property, that was to add to the connection?
Who's the property owner of record for Cornerstone?
I don't know for sure, Tony, but I did know that Mr. Trout was the owner of that property.
Well, he owns the land, that's part of the contract.
He owns the land?
He owns the land underneath the building.
Of Cornerstone, former Perkins, Cornerstone, now. And then the Carwash itself has, in fact, been sold.
Yeah, Jeff Gold owns the building and the property. But the Cornerstone building, actually, Canada Daywood Bank has control of it, of the building.
Of the building itself.
So back there, behind the Carwash and all, there's all this mound of dirt and all this.
Yes, you recently granted him a topsoil screening and removal permit. That's where that's all being done at this point in time. I'm anticipating, we're just talking about this, because of the nature of the weather coming up and everything, and he has not started doing any screening, and he said he wasn't going to at the time that he got his permit. I'm thinking we may put that permit into abeyance, let that time expire. It's a six-month permit, let it expire, because I don't think he's going to be doing anything out there once it starts freezing up. Have him come back to you, renew the permit, and then have him start from that point on, get it done next summer, spring and summer.
Sounds fair. Okay, we're up to speed, and...
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable.
So what are next steps, then?
Next steps would be that he would make application for final approval for the rear building, because you've got to get the dentist in, I would think. Is that your intent?
Well, I would come in for both.
You're going to do both at the same time?
I mean, the building, the front building, the design and architecture's already done.
All right, so when you make your application, you'll be submitting that information to the board as part of the application process.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be the next step, and it will be to come in for site plan, the site plan approval.
Very good.
Other questions for staff or for the property owner?
I think as he comes in, you know, we've been very conscious of the neighbors to the east. There is a very good buffer behind this building. I know he's not going to approach into it as deeply as we did on the Masachi building, just because there wasn't as much buffer there. But we will have to do some landscaping as part of the process, and, you know, neighbors are, I need their neighbors aware of it, and they understand.
Dr. Flon, are you thinking that the design of that building is going to be similar to the other buildings?
The buildings in the front?
Yes, okay.
Great, thank you. And don't forget your map.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mark, for that. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Our first action item, we've got the Hair Salon Spa, conditional use permit that we heard last Wednesday, 2105 Five Mile Line Road. Mr. Costello?
Thank you, Tony. Did you note that we did have a public hearing last week? I don't think anything came out of it, other than the fact that because they're proposing a sign at the intersection, that property is located within the Historic Preservation District. We, I have, they've already made an application to appear before the Historic Preservation Board for that sign on the 5th or 6th of November, the one after you. You'll be with me, I know, always are. So they'll be in for review with the board. I don't have any issues or concerns at this point in time with the business. I'm thinking that, if anything, if you're comfortable with the sign package, we talked about them asking for three signs on the property, although it's not precedent-setting, we have done it, and I've got several locations that I can show you we've done it. They are asking for three, they're asking for the freestanding sign. The freestanding sign itself, I would request that you hold it in abeyance, just until the Historic Preservation Board has a chance to look at it, and you can have both agrees to what the final product would be. The other signs themselves, they don't, I mean, they comply with our sign requirements in terms of size and all that, because they're basically replacing the signs on the north and south side of the building. They are asking that they be able to put an awning sign on the entrance of the building. They need relief from that, we need a good wing right there.
Jim, I mean, you don't have to run down all these other examples, but when in recent, in the last two or three years, have we allowed more than two signs?
They're actually right at the corner of, ironically enough, at the corner of Woodside Drive, Wendy at work, she did come, she did not come to this board early on, she came in before you had jurisdiction over that, but she did come in for signage. She made a case that as you're coming from the north, or I'm sorry, you're coming from the east, you couldn't see it, because the sign was on the front of the building, so she came in and applied for permit to go from the west and the east side, so that you could see them as you were approaching.
And left the south side.
That's right.
As well.
That's right.
Shame on the board for not having that sign removed.
And has an awning as well.
And it has an awning.
Is the awning, is the awning considered different than a fixed sign?
No, according to our ordinance, any identification's use is a sign, any way you do it.
So the one example that you've shared so far, sort of, was before we had jurisdiction, and it sounds as if they took a little bit of advantage of the situation. I mean, I just, I mean, we're very particular about the signs in this area.
Well, one of the things I'm concerned about, as you're relating to this to me, is the fact that we are still reviewing the signage for Mark's Pizzeria, and on his proposal...
Because he asked for three as well.
He did. And his design of his building is such that you're going to have big, open vacant spaces on the upper portion of the building, once you decide what the signage is going to be or isn't going to be on it.
Well, to me, the only one that seems like it's unnecessary is the one facing Liberty Street, the north side, because if you got that freestanding sign anyway, but you need it, you need it for 441, you need that sign. I mean, it's a hidden area, Yotini's, I think, is part of the reason that it didn't succeed.
Well, that's the uniqueness of this particular building, is it is kind of heading back on the street.
We want to help them out, give as much sign as you can, but the one on facing Liberty Street, it just sounds unnecessary, if they have a freestanding sign right there at that intersection.
It'll be at the intersection, you've got to go down to their driveway to get to them, if you're concerned.
What is the actual address?
2105, it's part of the actual...
It's a Pennyfield Road address?
It's a Five Mile Line.
Oh, Five Mile Line, I'm sorry.
It's basically the back portion of the Cubby Vanderzell House, it's adjacent to Mark's Pizzeria. It's the garage or the barn to that house.
So if you have it on Five Mile Line, you have it on 441, you have the freestanding on the intersection of Liberty and 501.
Well, but I understand that argument, but I don't know if I buy that argument. I don't know if having a sign on the south side is necessary so you see it as you're flying by Starbucks or the bank. I mean, Starbucks doesn't have a sign to the north side, so you can see it from Five Mile or Liberty Street. I mean, and, you know, so I'm just trying to, I mean, what I'm saying is that it's not necessarily keyed up from 441. It'd be different if it were, the parking was, you know, directly accessible off of 441, if the parcel was a 441 address, but it's not. I mean, the way that you would describe it, the address, I mean, how it would come up on a map, I would assume is going to be off Five Mile or parking off Liberty Street. So having a sign or needing a sign on the south side of the building, I don't think is, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out who would be coming off 441 from the east or the west, especially from either direction, and cutting through, traversing through, and looking for that sign in particular.
Well, you've got to remember too, though, they're banking on the fact that they're going to be utilizing Mark's Pizzeria parking lot as part of their parking, and he's already offered to do that for them.
Well, I mean, in that argument, you could have a sign on the back of every building in that area.
True.
So, I mean, I think we need to, I mean, the Mark's Pizzeria, we still have that outstanding?
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that.
Okay, I mean, we have the Historic Preservation Board to kind of, you know, wait for the freestanding sign, but, you know, as I said, when we were looking at the Lake Miller sign about a year and a half ago now, that, I mean, it's, I have nothing against the sign that is there. I have sort of my stance when I did not, you know, or move in favor of that sign, was that it's not really in standing with the rest of the signs within the Four Corners District, and no different than when Legacy came in and asked for the backlit sign with a, you know, the new sign. I mean, so I'm just trying to be consistent in my stance. Now, if we want to look at the whole sign package for the Four Corners District again and say, "It's either all or nothing," or we want to revamp it, then I'm all for that too. But, you know, there are businesses there, you know, if the 7-Eleven, if the gentleman who owned the 7-Eleven wanted to come in because, in essence, the business was changing, and he wanted to put a sign on the back, or a new freestanding sign out front, it's awfully hard to then say, "Well, no, but we're going to put three signs and a freestanding sign across the street."
And I think that was the rationale for Mark's. Obviously, they don't have a freestanding sign, their building is a freestanding sign, basically. That's probably how they got to where they need to be.
So tonight, I'm not in favor of moving forward with the sign package as proposed. I mean, I'd like to at least hear what the Historic Preservation Board has to say about the freestanding sign, but at the same time, I, you know, from my perspective, I just don't think three signs are warranted or justified currently within the Four Corners District.
I'm not speaking for the Historic Preservation Board by any means. I don't think that they're going to be concerned about having a freestanding sign there, I think they're going to be concerned about what it looks like.
Yes.
And that's what it should, and that's what they should be looking at.
The other issues are your issues, and you should be dealing with them.
I would certainly support, I mean, we're looking at right now, as far as our action item is the conditional use permit. And I know that, obviously, you know, the signage has something, is somewhat ancillary to that, where I don't think that we, I think we can go forward on the use permit, so that she can get going and get in the new spot and get her business up there. And I would concur, though, with holding it in abeyance, the above and beyond additional requested sign, and approve the, you know, the currently permitted signs. And then hold that, and then look at Mark's and that parcel together, because maybe there's something we haven't thought about yet that would work, but I don't want to hold up her business. But isn't she asking for three signs on the building when you're allowed to?
Well, you're actually allowed one. You granted the other user two, you granted one on the north side and one on the south side, were the reasons that Rob was talking about in terms of visibility.
But she's asking essentially the same that Mark's is asking for, right?
She's asking for a third sign plus a freestanding sign. And with all due respect, I think she needs a freestanding sign, I think that was the downfall of Yotini's, they didn't have it and they didn't ask for it. The question's really going to be in your minds, as to what does she really, how much signage does she need on the building?
Two.
And I'm in favor of moving forward with the business. I just, you know, usually, the, you know, sign package is a part of this, so if we want to split it, that's fine. You know, I have no problem with a freestanding sign, but not in conjunction with three signs on the building. So I just think we need to, you know...
So we have split before. We've asked, we've approved the use, and then had them come back to us with the signed layout. And so I think the message is a couple of things. Certainly, we want to hear back from the Historic Preservation Board, that is key. But I think what I'm hearing pretty clear is that not three signs on the building. And that may, that may have an effect on, you know, what signs they have, and where they strategically plan, place them, which may also necessitate some modification to the signs. So between the Historic Preservation Board and the fact that we're looking to cut back on the signage, it might be good for them to go through Historic Preservation, take a look at what the signs are, and then bring the new package back to us.
Make some decisions they need to.
Historic Preservation Board, as you know, they're very active, they may have some suggestions that she hasn't thought of yet. But I think if we can move the business, get the business going forward, that might assist things.
All right, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, so move forward, you'll draft a resolution for the board on the conditional use component, and the outstanding item will be a sign package to be reviewed at a future work session.
Very good.
Okay, other questions, board? All right, we'll move, excuse me, move on to item number two, Nottingale's Realtor, Realtor's Site Plan Approval Request, 1797 Five Mile Line Road. And Jim, I know you submitted some additional materials back to the board.
I did. Mr. Pardee heard your voices and responded the next day, actually. It was pretty impressive. As I stated at the public hearing, the Town Board, or the PRC had the same concern that Rob discussed at the public hearing regarding making sure that as you enter into this area, there wasn't going to be a conflict, and the potential was there for a conflict. Al went back, did some measurements, found out that the driveway is about 14 feet, 14 feet is pretty tight, you're not going to get two cars between each other safely in 14 feet. So he recommended to Nottingale, and they agreed to allow this to be a one-way only into the property. Makes sense.
You can exit on mics, going in different directions.
That's right, that's exactly right, and they're encouraging them to do that. I think most people do that at this point in time now, it's just easier. The second part of that was to determine the landscaping, if there was going to be landscaping or not. He's indicated there still is going to be landscaping, he's got boxwoods, green boxwoods that he's showing.
Green velvet boxwoods.
Thank you. The other issue was, the PRC reviewed this this morning, as I noted to you in my email to you today, we find it to be a pretty nice layout. Two of the things that we want to see done, the signage, we want to see a one-way only sign here, so that as you're pulling out, starting to making your move here, that you see that and don't make the move in. He was showing it here earlier. It's probably too late by the time you get here, you're not going to back all the way out, you'll probably make the move to get out that way. So we'd like to see it here. The other issue here is that, back in the day when this was all put in place, which was probably 30 or 40 years ago, the handicap accessibility requirements for parking areas has changed, and he needs to provide an eight-foot discharge area for vans or whoever's going to discharge from this area. This doesn't cut it the way it is, so we're going to work with him to redesign it to make sure it works, or possibly even do it over close to the building. It's up to them as to where they want to put it, they can put it in their spot, but they are going to need to do some work on this, just to get it to be a viable handicap space under state code. We talked about putting some exit signs out here, so that you can see, you know, this is where you're supposed to be going versus that way. Those are all minor details that we'll work out with him on the site plan sign off, so that's kind of where we are now.
Okay, very good. I think that's a good solution.
And you gave a good feedback earlier, as you mentioned, from the PRC, so I sort of, and, yeah.
And the board's comfortable with the additional landscaping in that area there?
Yes.
Okay, and everything else stays as it was originally proposed? Okay, so Jim, you will prepare a resolution for the board on this item?
Absolutely.
And we'll have that in before us on next Wednesday for our legislative session.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for the follow-up with those requests from Councilman Quinn. So thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to item number three. Item number three is Jeremiah's Extended Outdoor Dining Hours, 2164 Carport Nine Mile Point Road. Mr. Costello, for any additional updates or comments from what has been, I believe, April was when we heard that, memory serves me correct. And so I think the board wanted to get through another full season, and that brings us, you know, kind of full cycle from original hearing, setting the hours 11 to 11, to the hearing in April, 11 to 1, and now discussion as to next steps.
Pretty well covered it. And if anybody needs references, I think I've sent them on to you, I know you have them, but...
Is that the proposal that's still on the table is...
11 to 1, yes.
Till 1 o'clock?
We've certainly dug this out. I was, you know, concerned about the length of time, just as Tony said about having a full season, and I think that we've certainly, there's been significant amount of time whereby we've seen them grow, and everything seems to be operating sufficiently.
So there were two items that we talked about at the public hearing. One was with regards to the shed roof, if you will, that came off on the south side, and then the extended hours. And so is the roof, or that permanent awning, I think is what he called it, is that permanent awning on the table, off the table?
The last discussion I had with him was, he initially didn't want to do it because he was concerned that he would have a sprinkler based on state code. He then went back to the building inspectors and they indicated it was a dry sprinkler system, which is a lot less expensive to install than a wet system. His intent, at this point in time, is to build that overhead shed to provide some type of cover for that area. His intent, at this point in time, is to build that, that overhead shed to provide some type of cover for that area. So with your permission.
So I'm anticipating that's, that's going to be constructed next?
I would think in the spring.
Next spring. Okay. And was there also some indication about acoustic, acoustic music to be proposed?
He indicated that he wanted to do that. Your comment to him was you would prefer to see him utilize the recreational permit process first.
Right.
Um, which would allow him to have three periods of time.
In the course of one calendar year.
To try that. Um, he, he agreed with that. He did not try that this year. Um, his indication is that he may try it early next year. Or he may come in and work over the winter months with you to come up with some plan that would be acceptable to the board if he could move forward on his request for it full-time. And I haven't spent much time talking about that particular compartment.
And then just going through my notes for this, um, there was some discussions. I think it was, uh, maybe it was Michael Young that raised the question as it related to speakers.
Correct.
And some concerns after ten or ten-thirty at, at night for the speakers.
One or two instances that, that they did hear speakers. They were adjusted. I haven't, I've been going back and forth with Michael on some landscaping issues. Um, he has not indicated to me recently that they've had any problems other than that one mail that we received from him.
All right.
Yeah. I, I think we, I agree with, with Paul. We've vetted this pretty thoroughly. We've gone through a full season and I'm prepared to move forward.
All right. Cause you'll prepare a resolution?
Yeah, prepare a draft resolution. Um, you know, just based on the time of year, I think what I'd like to do is prepare the resolution for you. Give you all some time to look at it. Make sure.
Right.
I don't think it's going to be an issue at this point in time, whether it's eleven o'clock or one o'clock. I just want to make sure you and the attorney are all comfortable with it.
Yep. I think that's, that's good. So if, um, you know, this, this one, we may work to our first legislative session in November to do that. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Board. Um, our next item is setting a neighborhood information meeting at ten eighty and ten ninety-two Penfield Road. Regarding a incentive zoning proposal. And that, that item is as a result of a, a discussion that we had with the Seal Construction. You know, back in August, I think is when they first came in. In August, we talked about, or they had talked about sixty-six units, a private drive. Rentals or ownership was still up in the air, two-story units. And talked a little bit about public information meeting, looks of the building and a few things like that. I think I, if I also recall correctly, they, they had some work and action items to go through. And identify some steep slopes and take a look at some other maybe environmental sensitive portions of that property. So that's what I recall from our August meeting.
You're right. And they did submit a new plan. They, they have done some survey work out there. They've identified the steep slopes. I believe at this point in time, they are away from the slope area. PRC did review the plan last week and the one issue that came out really is the fact that towards the end of the project. You note that they have not identified a specific T-turn around for fire vehicles, emergency access vehicles. We would require that to be done, which I don't know how deep they are into this area here, but they may have, they may have to lose a couple of units to provide that service. So, um, those are things you have to think about in terms of density and if it's a proper density or not.
So if I recall correctly, um, if, if this were built under conventional zone. The number of lots that could be placed on that piece of property are fifteen.
That's right.
And they're currently proposing?
I believe seventy-four.
Seventy, seventy-four. The sixty-six has moved to seventy-four. So I, I would, I would, uh, my, my personal comment is, is that what it appears is, is though it's happening is that the developer is trying to cram in as many lots as they, as they can. I don't think that's what the intent of, at least from my perspective, what the intent of the incentive zone is. And while I may be at some point interested in a public information meeting. I'm not, I'm not personally comfortable going to an information meeting with seventy-four lots at this point.
Exactly. I was going to say, I agree as well. I don't think that this is ripe for neighborhood information or input. Because I don't think it's going to be, in my opinion, what ultimately will be on that site.
Yes.
And I don't want to mislead anyone in the neighborhood.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Tony, I agree with you. I've been leery about this particular density of a project since the, the beginning when it was first proposed. And so I do concur with your assessment of, it looks like it's just kind of packing as much in as possible. And, you know, as this looks right now, I would not support this project as it's proposed at this point.
Right. Other, other comments? I think what, what we should do is we'll get a meeting together with Mr. Vasile so that he can hear that. And maybe it'd be appropriate for you and I and Mr. Valentine to sit down and have that conversation. I, I certainly can bring to them, you know, the concerns of the board and have, have that dialogue. But at this point, I think it's clear, it's pretty much unanimous that the board is not looking to move forward with a public information meeting at this point.
Very good.
Okay.
Let him know that.
All right. Um, that will then take us to action items, public works. There are none. Public safety. There are none. Community service. There are none informational items. Uh, we have the Villas of East Hampton roadway dedication. And I think it was in the July-ish timeframe that we had the developer in raising, raising a question and interest of dedication of that, of that roadway system within that development. And we asked the developer and staff to go back and take a look at, you know, what were some of the concerns, issues? And I know Mr. Valentine had taken the lead to do that and then also take it to PRC as well. So Mark, with that, I'll turn the floor over to yourself.
Thank you, Board. My apologies for the two sheets. The copy didn't like to be double-sided for some reason. Yeah. After the board's last discussion here, tasked PRC with taking a look at the site. You had some initial feedback from the DPW with some of their concerns. We kind of took their concerns, drove the site, took a look at it. Mr. Walker did go out and do some core samples on, on the property. We did witness those where they did core the road and that's been some of the board's kind of first questions in the past is it built to town standard? And for the most part, it does appear it's built to town standard. But I believe PRC has some concerns outside of the actual construction of the road. Originally, Maryview was built as a private drive. The forehead has much smaller setbacks than, than what is typical. Normally we take a sixty-foot right-of-way through a new subdivision. This would have basically zero or possibly negative setbacks based on the proximity of the buildings to the road. Which makes it a very nice community in there, but it is, has issues being conforming to what our current standard is. So first and foremost, DPW has some concerns about plowing. Obviously they're always looking for snow storage. Where's the snow going to go? How can we stockpile it in there? People do have some beautiful landscaping, but being so close to the road, the snow may end up on top of their landscaping. There may be some, some conflicts, concerns, you know, because not all of it is going to be dedicated. They're proposing to have the main loop around the outside dedicated. There's portions, and I did bring them out. So they're proposing or requesting to have the inside loop dedicated. There's portions connecting over to Camden Park to the back, other pieces that could still be private. As well as, you know, all the individual driveways or the pieces in between. So obviously some coordination between public and private. That happens on publicly dedicated roads as well as we all have plow or have our driveways cleared with that. Um, some of the other items, there is streetlights that are currently owned by the association. If those would be in the right-of-way. We'd have to work through whether a lighting district could be formed, whether the association operates them within the town right-of-way. There's some coordination with that. We typically inspect and accept all sanitary sewers. This development has basically private storm sewers at this point, but they would end up in the right-of-way as well. So we'd have to televise, review those, make sure the storm sewers are acceptable if they're going to be taken on as, as a dedicated infrastructure. I believe we spoke previously about the bridge and I put it in quotes because it is a culvert. But the area now kind of looks like a bridge. It has some guide rails on the side and has pavers on top. That's not a typical town standard road for plowing and for maintenance. We've shared that previously with Mr. Walker and there's a portion they're looking at doing that in the next phase that they're in now. Is possibly doing that same similar treatment. If it's a private road and it's maintained and operated by them, you know, that's acceptable. But if they're going to make it a dedicated road, we look to have that paved as, you know, as the rest of these, rest of the street. There is a guardhouse at entrance that bridges the sidewalk. Again, that's not typical town style policy if it was to be plowed or anything else. Either we'd have to make an exception for that or have the guardhouse removed. Being on a private property, private development, it was approved, you know, by this board initially. It would be a little bit different from that. And then, and I have not verified this last one, there was some question about the setbacks as whether that would require some state board review for fire code to, the state building code for five-foot setbacks to, to property line. So. We did put this in informational meeting, very informational on your agenda tonight. There's a lot of information here. Just kind of sharing as an update back to the board, based on your request. I'm also sharing with, with Mr. Walker and make sure he was here tonight for the discussion. If the board has any discussion items or any additional items they'd like to have to take a look at, if you're willing to do that.
One of the questions, and I think this is a pretty simple observation in some ways. But right now, a private contractor comes in and plows. Would that be correct? Okay. So if the, if the town took over dedication, we would have one of our large plows go down in there. Is the neighborhood capable? And I think you kind of allude to it in, I think it's the first or second one. With the type of plowing that the town typically does on standard town roads going into this development. I mean, it's going to shoot the snow.
It'll physically fit on the road and still.
Right.
Built to town standard, but the throw of the snow could be.
Is it going to hit that, is it going to hit the homes?
It depends on the speed of the plow.
If you look at the winter that we had last year, when it constantly snowed and didn't stop, there was no place to put the snow.
And then where do you get, you know, typically on a town road, we then get out the wing and push it back.
Shelf.
Yeah.
Shelf it off. Now we're almost pushing it up against the foundations of the house and on top of landscaping and other areas that.
Yeah. And I'm, and, and I'm not trying to direct the conversation one way or the other. I'm just thinking out loud on this. And so you're throwing snow onto, you know, people's property. You could say the homeowners association property. And as we know, sometimes when snow piles, it tends to, it might kill the vegetation that's underneath it with the salt that's going to be in the snow. Or whatever kind of debris is in the snow. So in the springtime, is, is everybody that has a, a residence around that loop going to have dead bushes and brown bushes because of the snow that's piling on top of it over the course of three, three and a half, four months? Plus the salt that's in that snow that could kill the vegetation?
Yeah. My biggest concern is what Andy's raising too, is I actually circled number three on here. And, you know, you look through all the, the items that the PRC has raised and they're all certainly valid and important. But they seem to be doable or changeable or fixable, except this, this one. And, and I'll read it just for anyone who might be watching or need clarification. "The new road right-of-way will leave most residents with very little to zero setback to the right-of-way. This is a concern for the DPW and the plowing of the roadway. This leaves very little room for snow storage. It will most likely have to be stockpiled on the existing landscaping in front of the homes." So I certainly would have a concern on behalf of those residents as to whether they really understand what that means. It's not like someone's shoveling a walkway and shoveling some snow. If you've got any ornamental things or a, a security system, um, uh, sign. Or, you know, it, it's gone. It's gone with, you know, with one, one plow through it. That's heavy snow. And, and we've mentioned windows on very.
We had broken windows in the past.
And mailboxes on the road too?
Yes. Well, we, we figure we got to move those back, you know.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to doing this. I mean, I'm just raising issues that just popped to my mind when we talked about it.
Through and as, as Paula had shared, you know, there's some logistical things and it may take some time and effort, you know, to get through them. But there are some physical constraints and, you know, the proximity of the buildings and the tightness of it, you know, is one that's apparent, you know, right off the bat.
And, and I would hate to have us go through all of this and have the residents have a certain expectation. And then find out real quickly that things aren't what they thought it would be. And then you have an issue that needs to be resolved.
And that the town know we don't have the same equipment as most likely your snowplow operator that the HOA has hired, you know, this one.
It's going to be a standard street plow that brings in and has a wing and will need to shelf it as we do on a typical town road in order to, you know, push that snow back as, as we experienced in February this year when it didn't melt and.
And the salt as well. Salt's only going to have so far to go. And, um, you know, as far as stockpiling that up as, as well sometimes in return.
Did, did the homeowners association, when I read this, you know, as a request of the homeowners association. Did they actually meet and kind of make this recommendation? Is this, I, I guess I'm trying to get a feel of who's, who's behind this.
Well, probably I started it.
Okay. And that's fine. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Just, just to let you know, it's probably I, I brought it up to the homeowners association as, as maybe if they would want to consider it. And talked to Jim, talked to Mark and, and stuff in, in there because, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, some things that, that need to be improved. I think is better salting than what they're doing, so for safety and stuff like that. And, and so I, I sort of started it. And what we're, we've let the residents know that we're approaching you and being on the agenda. And they have a, their annual meeting next month and we're going to bring it up more to them to get them to either sign that they really want to do this or whatever, you know, to get, to get their permission. Because it's really up to them too, as long as it's up to you and it's up to them, you know. But, um, and so I brought it up to them, as I was saying, because their HOA fees and stuff like that there can go up quite a bit for maintenance and stuff. But my main, one of my main concern is, is, uh, they hold back from doing proper salting, you know, for the expense and different things. And, and that's the safety, to me, it's a safety item, you know, and which concerns me. And, and, you know, yes, we're, we'll probably be built out and be out of there in a year, a year and a half. But I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about them, you know, I'm really, I'm concerned about the whole thing, you know. And, and probably if I was the initial developer, I would have probably been trying to ask for this right from the beginning. And then, and I know this is after the fact, but we're trying to come up with a solution that might possibly work for everybody, you know. And that's, that's what we're trying to do. That's all, you know, so.
So would the steps at this point be, are these concerns then taken back to the HOA? So they're fully aware of what would need to be done?
They know that we've got to replace the bridge. The other bridge we're putting in now, this month, and there is not going to be the same type of bridge. It's going to be to town standard. So that's, that, we're going to do that right up, right off, right off the bat. So that won't have to be changed. The other one, we know is going to be changed because the plows will bring up the brick or whatever is, is pretty. But it's, you know, that wouldn't be pretty if the plows go by it a few times, you know. So, and so we know those are going to be changed. We know we got to move mailboxes back. We know we got to change some of those things. And, and, and the current HOA board has said that that sounds like a, you know, reasonable alternative. If, if, if we get the support to move forward. So, and.
I, I think, I think Andy and Paula did a great job, you know, mentioning the concern. And Paula read the, the one that definitely stands out. But I mean, we're, the aesthetics aside, I mean, bridges, guardhouses, mailboxes. Those are all movable structures. But when we talk about setbacks that are less than five feet or zero setbacks. We're talking about the destruction of property at the expense of potentially the town. And that's where my concern lies because I used to live on Penfield Road for, for a few winters. And, you know, I had the typical maybe seventy-five foot driveway. But the snow shoots pretty far. I mean, the plows are moving a little faster, but the snow is heavy. It is thicker. It's shooting pretty far and it does some serious damage to the property. So if you're having a town plow go down a street where the wing, in theory, can't even shelve snow. I mean, that to me is just, you know, counterproductive to everything that we're trying to do from the town's perspective. So I think, you know, I don't know if I'm going to be in favor of moving forward, even if the homeowners association is fully aware of what this means to their properties. Just because of the liability to the town or the, the frustration of our town fleet. Trying to, the challenge from our highway guys trying to actually maneuver in there with, I don't even know how many driveways there may be. And private contractors going in and out of the driveways, but with no room, right, with no room to move snow. You could have an entire street plowed by their driveways.
Right, with no room to move snow, you could have an entire street plowed by their driveways, and then the town plow comes down and you've got the entire street blocked again with no place to.
It doesn't sound like it's a benefit for either, you know.
I don't have the exact footage for what houses are set back, but I think they're probably set back like 40 feet from the road, 35, 40 feet, something like that. But I don't have the map with me, so I don't know that for sure on that there. But it is, it is a road that any truck really can't move that fast, you know. I mean, it's not, it's not.
Right.
It's not long where they can be going 40 miles an hour down through there, you know.
You're talking about the end of the driveway would be locked in, there's no control over.
Oh, there's no doubt. The end of the, I mean, not every winter is the same, but the ends of the driveways are going to be very problematic for the homeowners. Shelving of snow, regardless of where the mailboxes are, are going to be very problematic for both the homeowners and the town fleet. It's just, there's just not a lot of room, and for right or for wrong, but the development was built without this in mind. I mean, I, if it was built with the dedication in mind, then I can assure you that everything would have been up to specs at the time, and we wouldn't have to worry about this. It was built as a private development. It was built to that standard. It wasn't.
You've got higher density because you had the setbacks.
But that creates the feel of the community, the homes are closer to the street, and it has, I mean, that's the ambiance of it, is being private. I mean, we didn't get into the conversation about it now, being a public road. The public has the rights of access and, you know, can walk the sidewalks, can stroll their dog through there. I mean, those are all the other things that.
That's a good point, Cas, because it's somewhat of a buyer beware, because the, what you said was, I think, very important right now, that higher density, and what was the benefit of the bargain there?
Right. In stone reflection on Mark, he's the second guy in.
And now, now, why aren't we going to go back on that bargain?
With all the respect, if that had been a dedicated road, half the units wouldn't be along the street the way they are now. They'd be set back where the second ones, second tiers are, and that would solve the problem. One of the other questions I had though, or two comments I had, was the first one is, if the town has to go and take additional right-of-way area, how does that affect their mortgages for each of the properties that are giving up land that when they got their mortgages for maximum square foot?
The people own the units that they're sitting on and five feet outside of their wall, so it probably would not be encroaching on.
It's the homeowners' area, it's the common area.
Right, it's the common area.
Some spots on the corners, and I didn't do a survey, but some corners may, we may have to cut off the corners of the five-feet people own, you know, or the common area through there. So, it is very, very close, and, you know, that's based on the survey they have. We haven't gone down to that level, but just kind of at a high level. But the density was established on being.
And granted, that's what I think your point is.
On being private and afforded to be.
The town board, the town granted that under the, with the condition that it would be a private road, so.
And then, one of the other things that comes to my mind is the issue regarding storm sewers. Sanitary sewers, if I recall, in that development are dedicated to the town. Storm sewers are private because the road was private. And so, we checked, we checked on the road base to verify that. Have we done anything with regards to the storm sewers? Because.
We have not as of yet. Obviously, that's a cost we'd incur, you know, with the sewer department, they'd have to go out and flush and televise.
Right.
Quite a bit of sewer, and if the Board wasn't, you know, in favor of moving forward, we've kind of held back. And that would be a next level if the Board, you know, was supportive of moving ahead. Obviously, we got to get into a little higher level of detail, we got to do some survey work, we got to map a right-of-way out, take right-of-way ownership, we got to televise and flush storm sewers and verify that they're in proper working order. You know, we'd have to look at the lighting system, set up a lighting district. You know, there's more work to do if the Board was in favor of this. We kind of just, you know, broached the areas of concern PRC had, wanted to see what the Board's thoughts were, and then, you know, we can continue to take it to the next step if you're in favor.
Okay. Well, certainly, we had it as a information item tonight. It wasn't for decision tonight, and I know that, you know, this memorandum from the PRC is hot off the press, so I think an opportunity, and I think Mark has seen it for the first time.
Yes.
And some of the Board members may be seeing it for the first time as well, just, you know, just based on timing. So, what I would say is that certainly, there needs to be a little bit additional review by the Board, and we will do that at a future work session. And then, I don't know what Mark's approach, but you may want to take that back to the Board for their initial review as well.
We have a board meeting next Tuesday. I'll definitely bring it back to them, and, you know, just looking for feedback and this type of things.
And we'd welcome feedback as well. So, after your board meeting, the next time that this Board is together at work session is on the 28th, and I would encourage that if there was any comments, any feedback, that in fact, that be sent to Mark.
Okay.
So, that the Board would have the benefit of that, any of that information as well.
Definitely, you know, so, we appreciate your consideration, you know, we really do. We know, I mean, it's different, and we just want to know what our guidelines would be if we could make it work, and it's all, you know, so.
Understood.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in. Mark Valentine and Cas, thank you for the update on that.
Okay.
Appreciate that. And it sounds like we'll have some additional conversations in two weeks. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. There being no further items before the town Board for the work session. The October 14th meeting will stand adjourned effective 7:56 PM.